I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask you all to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little different approach with our meeting this evening because we have some distinguished guests with us who will, we'll be introduced in just a moment. We certainly have the Board of Selectmen Chairman with us, Mr. Tavares, welcome. And we have the Chairman of the Town Council from Shichigahama. And Chairman does not speak English too well, so standing next to him on his left is a translator. So we will try to speak slowly so we have time to translate.
Everybody, good evening. This year I come to Plymouth as the head of our delegation from Shichigahama. My name is Mutsuo Omachi and I am the Chairman of the Shichigahama Town Council. Already twenty-eight years has passed since Shichigahama and Plymouth have become sister cities. We always try our best to keep our exchange alive and going very well. I feel very grateful that our previous mayor, Mayor Abe, was so instrumental in forming this relationship. So for everyone from Plymouth Public Schools, I would like to express my deep gratitude for welcoming us here today. The time here in Plymouth has already passed very quickly. It's already the fifth or sixth day and I can't believe how quickly all of the days go by, but I attribute that to how well we're being taken care of by everyone here. From now on, I hope that we can form even better bonds with all of you, even though we don't have the Japanese own scent to get to know each other.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arigato. For those of you, for those of you who do not know, and for our viewers on television, we signed an agreement with Shichigahama in the late 1980s and we have been exchanging students every year since then. And last evening I was told the number is somewhere between three hundred and five hundred students have already spent time in Shichigahama or have, Japanese students have come to Plymouth and stayed with host families. And what I would like to do at this moment, now, actually Mrs. Hunter's going to do it for me because she is Chairman of the Distinguished Visitors Committee, and we would like to have the Japanese children.
Yes. First of all, I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the Distinguished Visitors Committee. I don't want to take the, the thunder away from the chairman, but I just wanted to say how wonderful, I've, like many of the board members, have had the opportunity to visit Shichigahama. I was there in 2013. I was part of the first delegation to go after the tsunami, which was a very moving and touching experience and I've been very thankful.
Can you translate?
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead. I'm too fast. And I've, I've been very thankful to be involved in the visits ever, every year since then. I've particularly had a great time this year and I know everyone's tired because they have had a very full and packed schedule. And before I turn it over to the students and the teachers to introduce themselves as well as Chairman Tavares, I know one of the first things that we did was, their very first day, we whisked them away to the Red Sox game versus the Yankees. And so in particular, I want to thank some local businesses for helping that happen. The Manomet Youth Foundation, Main Street Sports, Nolan Insurance, The Lobster Pound, Dale Weber and the Cobra Union, and Selectman John Mahoney for helping to make this happen. And this time, I'd like to have Chairman Tavares say a few words, but if the teachers, we have three teachers visiting with us as well as fourteen students, so if they want to come up and say a few words after Chairman Tavares speaks.
Thank you. It's certainly a pleasure to be here this evening. I must say, being before the school committee, makes me feel like a rebel tonight and I'm enjoying it. I don't have a tie on. When I was in the seventh grade at Nathaniel Morton, if you didn't wear a tie, the teacher always brought one out from under his desk that had been around for a hundred and two years. But thank you for all of the help that you have given during this visit. This has taken both the general side of government and the schools together to actually celebrate another visit by our counterparts in Shichigahama. It is so important that this relationship continue. There are so many lessons that all of us have learned. Last year, along with Dr. Sorensen and Selectman Joyce, I had the opportunity to go to Japan and the, the culture, the exposure to it just opens up your eyes and look behind us, all of these students, the experience they're getting, you can't get that in a, in a classroom. So thank you to all of the people that have participated, the families, the time that has been put in by the Distinguished Visitors Committee. You've, you've done a great job and already the Chairman and I are talking about what, what happens in, in 2020 and the other visits that are coming down, but there is, there has been so much gained once again by the hard work of so many of you and thank, thank you for what you've done.
And thank you. What I would like to do at this point, I would like to have all the Japanese children come up and face you, because the cameras are out there, and have the teachers come in and face you as well. Would you tell them that?
And as you can see, these students range from age eleven to sixteen.
My name is Kaishiko Neko.
My name is Shima Endo.
My name is Ibuki Takahashi.
My name is Kazuki Wabuchi.
My name is Shouei Abe.
My name is Motoi Watanabe.
My name is Takahiko Chiari.
My name is Yvonne Hoshi.
My name is Mick Hoshi.
My name is Hibiiki Sato.
My name is Erika Suzuki.
My name is Yui Keshida.
My name is Sarah Seenaga.
My name is Hime no Akama.
And we have some teachers.
My name is Yuta Ono.
Hello. My name is Toshiya Ito Tani. Thank you.
My name is Erika Kobayashi.
It was a long journey.
[speaking Japanese]
But I also want to thank our host families, because without our host families, these children wouldn't have a place to stay.
Yes, I think tonight is a wonderful evening to have the children here from Japan as well as the host families and the children that are in those host families that really formed a bond over the years. Tonight is a special night for me because there's a young man in the audience who I stayed with his family when he was a year old and he is now twelve and Shima, if Shima could stand up for a little bit, I'm embarrassing him. And he's a basketball fan because he's got a Jordan shirt on, so we're happy with that. But he was, when I say, I'm embarrassing him, I know that, but I stayed with him when he was just learning to walk that week and he just turned a year old. So it was wonderful. I'm glad he's here and just grateful for this relationship. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, okay. We're going to move on, our agenda.
And we will see you the rest of your trip.
See you later. See you in a little bit.
A little bit.
See you later. Tomorrow, nine thirty. Thank you. Arigato. The next item on our agenda, I'm going to do a little differently this evening. At every meeting, we have an opportunity for the audience to address the school committee on matters, but I, I'm guessing some of the people here want to speak to a specific agenda item, so I'm going to invite anybody who wants to speak to the school committee for an item that's not on the agenda to raise their hand and I'll recognize you now and later when we get to the agenda item that some of you want to speak to, I will recognize you at that point. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the committee on an item that is not currently on the agenda? I didn't think there would be any. Thank you very much. We'll move along now to our next item, which is all business. Is there anything from the committee on all business? Okay. Seeing no hands, is there new business from the committee this evening? Seeing no hands on that. Superintendent's report. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight I have a few items to report on. As you are all aware, we do have our visitors from Japan and we've had a wonderful time with them. I'd like to thank everyone that was already mentioned and, you know, we do have opportunities in the future for students that actually would like to travel to Japan and be part of this relationship. It's nice for these families to come together and actually understand more and more about this relationship because it is a twenty-eight year relationship and we look forward to the upcoming years of exchange that we will have with, with Shichigahama. Twenty-eight years is a long time. The next item I have is, last week, Dr. Campbell had the opportunity to represent the district at a gathering at Harbor One and they donated about, how many backpacks? Two hundred backpacks. And the backpacks are pretty unique because it's a backpack, it's filled with school supplies, and it also has a personal note from an employee of Harbor One wishing that student a great school year. So we're going to be passing these backpacks out to students that are in need or students that have been identified that, that may need a backpack for the start of the school year, so we'll be issuing those out before the, the school year at an assembly.
That's a great donation.
It's a wonderful donation. I will write a letter to Harbor One thanking them. This is the second year that they do this and you, it's amazing to see the kids when they receive it, they're so happy and they're just jam-packed with supplies. So that's a wonderful opportunity for us. I just want to give the committee an update regarding South High School. The fields are coming along. The field, as you pull into the South High School campus, the field to the left will be complete for the start of school. The field to the right will not be ready until the end of October. There's a delay in some of the drainage supply lines that they need for that field and that's putting off the schedule, but we will have that complete campus. Those two fields will be done, you know, September, end of August for the field to the left and the field to the right will be in, in October. Just want to remind everyone that the, the first day of school for students is August thirtieth and the first day for teachers is August twenty-ninth. School committee, you're invited to opening day and we'll send out some other invites. And then that is it. Mr. Sorensen, Dr. Sorensen.
Thank you. Committee members, were there any questions? Mr. Mon.
Yes, as you talk about South High School, how's the damage from the fire we had, has that been repaired and be ready to go for opening day?
North High School is coming along a lot quicker than South. North High School will be ready. South High School, they'll be doing some painting and finished work into the school year, but the contractors are in there. They're doing a good job. Arthur's been on them. The, I believe the tile's gone down with some of the areas that need a tile, but that is moving along nicely, working with our insurance company to ensure that that project comes out as we expect. So Arthur is, is there pretty much every day, just making sure that things get finalized. Okay? I will give you an update as soon as I get like a drop dead date of when they anticipate the project will be complete. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions to the superintendent following his report? Okay. Retirements this evening? Dr. Campbell.
Yes, Mrs. Frye's way, but I'm here to announce the retirements. Isabel Magallet, security receptionist at South Elementary School after thirty-six years. Robert Silver, maintenance floater for the Plymouth Public Schools for thirty-six years. And Kim Williams, a classroom teacher at Cold Spring for eight years.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank these individuals for their service and congratulate them on their retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Okay. This evening, our only substantive agenda item is this next one. The committee knew that we would be getting a recommendation on the alternative high school when it was first brought up here several months ago, and this is our evening to get that recommendation and it's an action item for the committee. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight we have on the agenda the future of Plymouth Harbor Academy. The intent, when we were investigating the program several months ago, was to take a look at opportunities in the town of Plymouth that we could probably look at moving the program to. Right now, the program is an evening program. It's housed at Plymouth North High School. It poses a number of logistic issues. Those issues will be, have been discussed at the different meetings that we've had with the community, the direct community of Plymouth. And, you know, it's a program that has been successful here in our district. It's successful because the students that are part of the alternative program setting that we've designed here in Plymouth are students that have unique needs that aren't met, can't be met during the regular school day. They enroll into this program and we've had a number of students that have graduated as a result of that interaction with the alternative program. The dilemmas that we have, we have part-time staff that are, actually full-time staff that are working after school to help these children in their programming and the model change was really designed to create more of a permanent atmosphere for these students to be engaged in a full-day program. Logistically, it's very difficult for, for students to come in at three o'clock, come to school at seven, and just to keep their motivation at, at late into the evening sometimes is really difficult, along with some other issues that Mr. Abatali will, will discuss tonight in his presentation. Tonight, I've invited Mr. Abatali to the school committee to actually provide a presentation that he presented to the neighborhood so that everyone can get a common understanding of exactly what the program is, kind of changes that they like to make. And one of the things that I did say at the last community meeting was that, you know, we're looking for an opportunity to make this program what it can be and to actually help the students that are in a dilemma because of certain conditions they may have or certain situations they've been involved in in their life. By looking at a program like this, we thought Oak Street might be a good location. We've had the opportunity to listen to neighbors' concerns. We've had the opportunity to go back and look at, you know, maybe rethinking different opportunities, parking, start times, end times, things of that nature. So tonight is just another opportunity for us to kind of understand what the program is and really what the best location would be for that program. So with that said, I'd like to invite Kevin to the table and he can provide an overview of where we are to date with information that he has presented. I think this will probably be his third or fourth time. So Kevin, welcome and you can jump in.
Thanks. You kind of took away my intro, but I did a better job, so. So again, my name's Kevin Abatali, I'm the director of the alternative program and the proposed Plymouth Harbor Academy. So we put this, or I put this presentation together to present to the Oak Street community members about kind of what we were doing and where we were trying to move forward. I had presented to you in November about some of the successes we were having and then also some of the severe limitations that we were having by having the part-time staff, having a building that wasn't really ours and then kind of inter, inter among or amongst regular day school students and some of the, the issues that that brings after school. So this is kind of a follow-up on that, you know, an idea to try to increase the rigor, increase the relationship building, try to understand our kids a little bit better and prepare them a little bit better moving forward for their future. So Plymouth Harbor Academy is something that we thought a lot about, the name, when you think of alternative ed, you know, generally people have a negative connotation, which really doesn't align well with our students. You know, they need things a little bit differently, but they're there because they want a diploma, they want to feel like they have a purpose. So harbor is convenient because we're in, we're in Plymouth, we're near a harbor, but it also has a deeper meaning, which is hope, accountability, resilience, balance, opportunity and respect, which is kind of the values, are, are exactly the values that we try to instill in our students. So the mission statement of Plymouth Harbor Academy is, the mission of Plymouth Harbor Academy is to provide alternative options for students who have difficulty in traditional settings. PHA hopes to bridge the gap between student potential and performance through an expansion of flexible academic and emotional supports. PHA hopes to meet the needs of our non-traditional students through increased rigor, relevance and relationship building to develop lasting impacts on students' ability to define their own success. You know, I think as we move forward in education, we, we are constantly trying to redesign and redevelop our thoughts about what academic means. Does it just mean world lit or Algebra II or are there greater meanings and understandings for our students and trying to prepare them for the real world? So I think that mission state, statement sums up that we're trying to meet the students' needs where they are and develop goals for them in the future. So we're not just checking the diploma and giving them a diploma and expecting them to go out and being fine in the real world, you know? So the underlying idea of what education means is, is that, is trying to, the student's ability to define their own success, to have a better understanding of what their interests are, what they don't like, what they do like, what, what makes them go, and then trying to develop a plan moving forward with that in mind. So our current student profile, the majority of our students are sixteen to eighteen years old. We do have some fifteen years, fifteen-year-old students and we do have some nineteen-year-old students, but I would say the majority of our students are sixteen to eighteen. They struggle in school, you know, they're all coming in credit deficient, struggling with outside stressors and needing, needing something different, but the one goal that remains is that they want a high school diploma. A lot of our kids have the opportunity to drop out at this point, you know, when they are sixteen, without legal ramifications, without getting the courts involved, but they are maintaining, you know, a level of interest and a connectiveness with us and so that alone shows the ability that we need to provide something better for them. You know, they're there because they want something and we need to figure out a way to give it to them. So nobody rises to low expectations, which is, I thought, very telling for, for these students with the current programmatic concerns. We only offer classes four days a week, Monday through Thursday, two forty-five to seven fifteen realistically. By the time we get the kids in there, you know, it's really three to seven. Gatcha Bus comes at seven in the evening to take our North Plymouth students, so we need to, we're out of there by seven to try and make sure that we can get the kids some transportation. You know, we have back-to-back classes, so if you look at our schedule, there's no time for breaks, there's no time for lunch, there's no time for passing, so just back-to-back schedules, which really isn't true. You know, the, the students might have a class on the first floor with facilities management and on the third floor, so that five-minute transitional period, you know, isn't counting and it's taking away time on learning in the classroom. So right now, we're deficient by several hundred hours in the state mandate and time on learning. So that alone is, is a huge concern because we're giving these students the same diploma, or we were giving the students the same diploma as the Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School students, but they are doing a significant amount less than them. Adjunct and part-time teachers, you know, having teachers come in after school after they worked a full, a full day, an entire day, and then asking them to deal with some of our students who need something a little bit different is, is challenging for the students because oftentimes the teachers are just basically regurgitating their day school curriculum and it's difficult for the teachers because they have to, you know, deal with students who don't necessarily want to learn and they've had a long day and it's, it's to no fault of anybody's own, it's just the system that we're currently in. We have no transport, we offer transportation to school, they're able to get on the bus that the day school students are getting off of, but then we don't offer any transportation home outside of Algonquin and Forest Ave, which we have a relationship with, Gatcha, who will take some of those students home. The rest of the students, West Plymouth, South Plymouth, Manomet, Cedarville, they're all on their own at seven o'clock at night. So oftentimes, I'll be driving people home in, you know, at seven-thirty at night, Mr. Monica in the back there will be driving down to Cedarville and then driving back home to Bridgewater. And it's difficult for the teachers, because they have to, you know, deal with students who don't necessarily want to learn, and they've had a long day, and it's to no fault of anybody's own, it's just the system that we're currently in. We have no transportation, we offer transportation to school, they're able to get on the bus that the day-school students are getting off of, but then we don't offer any transportation home outside of Algonquin and Forest Ave., which we have a relationship with, Gatcha, who will take some of those students home. The rest of the students, West Plymouth, South Plymouth, Manhamet, Cedarville, they're all on their own at seven o'clock at night. So oftentimes, I'll be driving people home, you know, at seven-thirty at night. Mr. Monica in the back there will be driving down to Cedarville and then driving back home to Bridgewater. You know, so it is, it is an issue, particularly when we have kids coming from our circum, these circumstances, they don't always have reliable transportation in their family or even outside, or friends or support, they don't have their own license. You know, not having a space to call our own, so we're using a day-school student's teachers, their spot. So oftentimes, we're able to get a cabinet in the classroom, and that's basically where we're able to store all of our stuff. So, you know, the kids come in, there's big signs that said, "Don't touch this, don't touch this," and then there's an AHF sign on one cabinet. So that level of just, you know, the kids are there, but they're not invested, you know, it builds with that. And then safety concerns, we have a number of after-school events going on. So we have sport events, we have plays going on, we have students just walking in the building and trying to just hang out, and you know, so we're trying to monitor our students at all times, but really, it comes down to sometimes a safety concern. We do have security there at night now, which is new. We got second semester this year, which was a huge help, but even with that, it's tough to tell who's supposed to be in the building versus who's not supposed to be in the building. You know, when you have a basketball game going on, and you know, we have classes come up, we have, you know, eighth-grade students, or, you know, they'll just come in and just kind of poke their head in our classroom and be like, "What's going on here?" And that, that's an issue when you're trying to have, you know, a class going on. So right now, this past year, even with those limitations, you know, we have a strong environment of staff and professionalism, you know, that we built up for our students and staff, but ninety-four point eight percent of all of our students passed all of their classes. Ninety-one percent of the students graduated on time, entered this year with the ability to graduate on time and did graduate on time, and eighty-nine point two nine percent was the attendance rate. So if you look at North and South, I believe they're in the low to mid-nineties, you know, so we're right on par with them. And I think the first two stem from the fact that we get kids to come consistently. You know, so we're focusing on those, the graduation on time and passing all their classes and checking those academic boxes, but we really want to do more in terms of just giving them more than just a diploma, which is basically, you know, what we, I feel like we focus on a lot right now because of the lack of resources and, you know, people in the building, I guess. So the potential improvements of finding our own space, I know Dr. Masters talked a little bit about this, was finding a space that the Plymouth Public Schools owned to make sure that there was no increase in the budget, to make sure that there was no added cost to this. So Oak Street was one, because a number of our students live within walking distance to Oak Street. You know, Gatcha line was willing to drop off right in front of, on the Summer Street, Oak Street line, so we were able to, you know, keep, we're actually able to decrease our Gatcha bus contract by doing that, because they're just going to run a regular line and be able to drop the kids off. Day-school hours, so, you know, moving the classes Monday through Friday now, ten to three. We're able to increase our time on learning, which was a huge concern, by over three hundred hours, which gets us, you know, right there with the state mandate. You know, and then the ability to schedule time to focus on the whole student, you know, constantly, we're hearing more and more concerns about substance abuse, mental health, behavioral concerns with our environment, with our school culture. And with this, we're really able to now focus on those concerns and build that into the schedule. So we'll have a rock block at the end of the day that will bring in people. We already have people scheduled for psycho-social-emotional trainings. We're going to bring in speakers that'll also be tied into their wellness credits. So that's something that we don't have the ability to do right now with the schedule as is, if you're going two to seven every other day. So now, we're able to build a little flexibility into the schedule to really work on the student and why they're there in the first place. Full-time teachers, so instead of having four English teachers, I mean, we're able to consolidate that to one. You know, instead of four math teachers, we're able to, so this semester, we had seventeen adjunct staff members or so, seventeen about, and so we would consolidate that into five full-time staff members. The budget would not be increased by that, except for the cost of living, which is included in everybody's, the budget, but the budget would stay exactly the same. So we're able to get teachers who are consistent faces for our students, and so our kids are able to find a little bit more success and consistency with the teachers. The teachers, this is their full-time job, I'm able to evaluate them, I'm able to give them feedback on what's working and what's not working, which is something for a part-time teacher I can do, but ultimately, it's a part-time job, so at the end of the day, if they want to leave and go do something else, they're able to do that without much ramifications. We'll have transportation to and from school, which includes for our South Plymouth students who live in Cedarville, Buttermilk Valley, the ponds, which is some, which is a huge benefit for a lot of our South Plymouth kids who live far away, would now be able to get to school and not have to worry about, you know, kind of figuring out how to get to and from. The own space, like I said, really given us storage and places to put up our flyers or projects or, you know, schoolwork, and showing that the kids that were proud of them, and, you know, instead of just having, you know, a closet or a small space in a classroom. And then we're, with that increase in scheduling, we're going to build into a work-community curriculum. We'll focus, particularly as the upperclassmen, juniors and seniors, will focus on community events, community volunteer, you know, different things along like that to get them in the community, get them exposure, get them real-life experience while we're still working with them to give them a little bit of feedback to help support them during that time, so that transition after high school isn't just off a cliff. So some of the community concerns by moving into Oak Street, so this was specific for them, was the, was the program size of over forty, student-age drivers, traffic, the technology didn't appear to be in the best interest of the students, and then why can't they be met in traditional high school settings? So the program size at Oak Street would be closer to thirty. Most of our students don't have their license. So this has actually changed through some of the conversations that Dr. Maestis and I had, and Dr. Campbell, kind of have had over the past few months. So instead of kind of that scenario, we're going to have the students park off at the Jenny Grif Mill, which is something that Dr. Maestis solidified with the town, and then the staff would park in the parking lot to limit the student-age driving on the street. The other transportation would be the Gatcha, which already drives by the Summer Street, Oak Street line, and then we would have two, the vans that we would hire to pick up our South Plymouth and West Plymouth students. We would also bring in a traffic, traffic guard, crossing guard, sorry, traffic guard, crossing guard to come in and to make sure, to limit, to make sure that they weren't idling for too long, make sure they weren't backing up any traffic. So those individuals would come in at the morning and afternoon. We would have the same technology, we would have, we have a computer cart that would be aligned with us, we have the projectors, we have all of the same things that we would need in order to run a functional classroom in that space. And then, why can't these students be met? So I've talked to Dr. Campbell about this a lot. It's like if you got fired from your job and you had to go back into your job every day, and you had to see your boss every day, even though that you had an epic fallout, and he told you you couldn't come back to the work, and that you were terrible at your job, and you couldn't be good at it, and now, you know, you have to go into that same job every day, but you have to be in the office across from him and just look at him, but you're not, you're not aligned with him, you just have to look at him, and that's a very awkward experience, I think we all could agree on that. So that's what it's like for my students to go into the north or south at this point. They've had negative experiences, they have negative experience with the teachers, with the administration, and we're trying to rebuild that trust with the community so that we can build them back up into being functional members of society, taxpaying members of society. And in order to do that, sometimes, we have to, we have to separate from what the problem is and start fresh. And so giving our own space, allowing us to redesign the program, redesign the scheduling and the structure, allows us to do that with the student, allows us to bring in positive relationships with these students where otherwise, there were none. So this was kind of just the kind of follow-up of the end, so that's basically, basically it.
Dr. Masters, Director Avitali, there's been some confusion over the MAP students versus the Harbor Academy students. Do you want to address that?
Sure. MAP Academy is a new school that's opening up here in Plymouth, they're a charter school, and we've actually have supported MAP Academy in its development, because we realize that there is a significant need for students, for the kind of education that MAP Academy is designing for their kids. Those are kids that would not fit into this model. Those are students that are eighteen to twenty-four, and they have some significant needs. A lot of these, a lot of these kids have actually gone through our alternative program and have not been successful in our alternative program. And there are certain, certainly there are some kids that have tried different programs and have been involved in different programs, and MAP Academy has welcomed those students. Of course, it's a lottery system, so they have to be selected through the lottery process, but we, years ago, identified that there were a large number of students that were currently going to school, that were on the verge of dropping out, that were on the verge of just quitting, and we knew it was going to explode the way that it has over years, over the years. So we really tried to address the needs of all of those children, and it's a pretty broad spectrum of student that we're talking about. So when the concept of MAP Academy came out to really take a look at a certain type of student that could really fit into the model that they were preparing, we definitely supported that model. So MAP Academy is dealing with students that are a different kind of profile, and this program is much younger students, up to graduating eighteen-year-old seniors. A lot of these kids, this is their first experience to a program that can help them get back on their feet and will help them to graduate, in some cases on time, in some cases, just a little bit late than what they would normally graduate. Some of the students in the MAP Academy program have been out of school for quite a while, and they're trying to rebound and get back, get back in, get their diplomas, so I, we can only encourage their success. We think that the model can be very beneficial for, for those students. This is a different program. I think one of the things that we did identify years ago was the quantity of children that we were dealing with, and the quantity of children that were really dealing with significant issues outside of school that were impacting their day in school. And I think this program here in Plymouth is something that the school district has a responsibility to work on, because those children are our kids every day. We're concerned about their well-being, we're concerned about their education, we're also concerned that they have a program that has a great deal of integrity. And before they get to a point where they lose hope for a second or third time, we want to try to recover what we can with those children, so they can be successful in our school. And again, you know, we hired Kevin. Kevin has been part of the program for a while, he became the director last year. And one of the things that Kevin brought forward, working closely with Dr. Campbell, was the concept of retooling the program and really identifying what the purpose of this program was and what the dilemmas were, what the problems were. And he presented these issues to us, and we started looking at options. And unfortunately, the school department doesn't have a lot of property anymore. We, you know, we don't have a building that could actually house them. Mount Pleasant, you know, we turned it back to the town, that got sold, but it was a much bigger building than that program ever needed. Started looking around, we saw, you know, Oak Street. Oak Street was a school, it was a two-room schoolhouse. The neighbors on that, on Oak Street, know that school very, very well. They're very passionate about that building, they're very engaged with what happens in that building. And one of the things that I had told my staff and Kevin included is, you know, we got to reach out to the community, because the community, we got to get some input from them. I think Kevin has tried to do that. We've had a number of meetings to try to educate the community on the kind of student, you know, but again, I think they've identified some concerns, and we've had to listen to those, and we have.
Before I open up the floor for input, committee members with questions for Kevin at this point. There'll be another opportunity later, in case anybody has something right now.
I was just going to ask, just to clarify, what the time was that the students would be attending?
Ten to three.
Ten to three, okay.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. At this point, the chair is willing to recognize members of the community who are here and would like to address the committee. Is there anybody who would like to? Chairman Tavorus, come on down, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee. I'm speaking without a vote of the Board of Selectmen, but through conversations in the last week or so, there is not support on the board for the Oak Street location. There is a great deal of support, and we certainly would stand behind you with the program and the benefits of the program and what you want to do, but we believe that Oak Street is the wrong location based on concerns that have been already addressed publicly by the neighbors. Also, there is concern regarding Jenny Pond. For a number of years, we have been encouraging businesses to have employees park at Jenny Pond. They are doing it. This will take spaces away from people that, it's taken quite a while to get them convinced that this is an okay place to park. Conditions in the winter are difficult, at best, going from Jenny Pond to Summer Street. The sidewalks are narrow, and I think that's going to create more problems than asking students to take that trip from the pond to Oak Street. So again, in summary, we support you with the benefits of the program, we just do not support the location.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I did see a hand up here in the back on the right. Please come down front and identify yourself, and then this gentleman in the gray shirt is next.
Good evening, members. My name is Kimberly Kevell. I'm a lifelong resident of Plymouth, and I've lived on Oak Street for the last twenty-five years. We are a united and deep-rooted neighborhood that borders the Oak Street School. Twenty years ago, it was suggested that an alternative school be moved into the Oak Street School. The proposal was vetoed then and most certainly should be vetoed now. The town of Plymouth has constructed two multimillion-dollar, state-of-the-art high schools with every amenity a student could need or want. Handicap access that can accommodate any type of a disability, an onsite nurse, an onsite resource officer, a cafeteria, and onsite parking for more than eight cars. The Oak Street School, at this time, cannot accommodate disabled students, teachers, parents, visitors, speakers, without major renovations. If a math teacher position, which we saw posted online, had a qualified candidate, would you discriminate and not hire that person? If a potential student was disabled, do you tell them that they have to go to another program at the expense of the town? What if during the school year, a student or a teacher became impaired and had no way to enter the building, or would not be able to get to the basement restroom? Would you take them away from their friends and teachers and send them to another program out of town? What is your plan? At what point do you come to the conclusion that this is an unfair and morally wrong decision? As of today, the problems and concerns we have presented you with have been answered with depthless and unsafe suggestions or matter-of-fact rebuttals. The grand idea you have of moving the alternative program out of a multimillion-dollar facility to the Oak Street School is diluting the residents and the taxpayers of the town of Plymouth. I am speaking as part of the neighborhood that has cared for the school when there were no tenants in the building. We represent an educated and passionate group that will never stop advocating for our Oak Street School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Jerry Cirico, Precinct Three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, school committee. I won't go through the whys and why-nots. We've all heard them, we all know where we stand on it. This was brought to Precinct Three's attention. As you know, Oak Street School is in Precinct Three, and if it was in the town of Plymouth anywhere, Precinct Three would be interested. But Precinct Three was involved with this. When it first started, Kevin introduced himself to me through emails and so forth, and we came in contact, he answered many questions that we had. We went back and forth, "We've been to your meetings, we know where you stand, you know where we stand." But I would like to say on behalf of Precinct Three that we welcome the alternative school, but not at Oak Street. We would really welcome it at Town Hall, the old Town Hall, Lincoln Street. We've had three schools in our district, in our precinct, Mount Pleasant, Oak Street, Nathaniel Morton, we're down to one. We'd love to have another one. We miss our Mount Pleasant School. Mount Pleasant School would have been, I don't want to go into... Mount Pleasant School would have been, I don't want to go into old, old business, but the Mount Pleasant School would have solved a lot of problems. We can see that now. Maybe even the skating rink that's being proposed for the town of Plymouth. But that's gone. But I'll say it one more time, Precinct Three's in favor of your program. Kevin, sounds like you can do a hell of a good job, but we'd love to see it in a different location than Oak Street. And we would love for you to consider Lincoln Street. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, please come down. Evening.
Good evening, Pat.
Good evening. I'm Pat Adelman, and I want to applaud the administration and the school committee for having an alternative program. I have experience with the niece who lives in another district where they don't offer alternatives, and it's a constant battle between the parents and the school department to find appropriate out-of-district placement. It's very expensive, and it's, the, the out-of-district programs just do not have the integrity or the academic rigor that you would have under an alternative program within the district. I, I understand that students who attend these programs, they have coping skills. We're going into crowded corridors and seeing people that might have bullied them. It's a problem. So they, they need a smaller setting outside of our beautiful new high schools. So I was not aware that the neighbors were against Oak Street. I thought it was a good idea, but wherever it is, I hope you do have a place for the alternative high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come down.
My name is Phyllis Farrar, and I am one of the Oak Street neighbors. And I'd like to first assure Mrs. Adelman that the neighbors are not at all opposed to the school having, the school department having, an alternative high school program. We totally support that. But we do not think that Oak Street is the right place for a number of reasons. I think that the parking issue, as far as using Jenny Pond, I don't know if you're aware about all the remediation that's going to go on through the fall, winter, and into the spring, so that may not even be available to you. So, and then I also have here an email from Alexander Skalas, the Mass Office of Disabilities, and he pretty strongly says that it's, you cannot plan a program that excludes people based on having a physical disability, and this program would do exactly that. This is not the same thing as sending students out of district when there's not an appropriate educational program within the district. This could be an appropriate educational experience for a student with a physical disability, and they would be excluded from it. That is clearly discriminatory. It also would discriminate against any staff member who would be well-suited to the program and had a physical disability. It's discrimination, pure and simple. And I also have in my possession, this is an article from the Old Colony, twenty years ago, when this was proposed before. And Mrs. Burgess and Dr. Sorensen, you were clearly against it at that time. None of the issues have changed, and I don't know why your opinion would change now on that, that building being suitable for the program. We have no problem with the program at all. We think it's necessary, and that is another actual drawback. At Oak Street, there's no room for the program to grow, and there's not even enough room to accommodate the number of students it's accommodated the past few years. So that's, in my, my way of thinking, very poor plan, and I think that it should go back to the drawing board, and other options should be investigated, including the option of getting creative and trying to find a designated space within one of the two high schools for the program.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your research. Yes, please come down.
Everett Malaguti, town meeting, Precinct One. I'm on board with the majority of the members that spoke before me, Ms. Farrar, Selectman Tavares, Mrs. Cirico, that Oak Street is not the best location for many reasons. As Selectman Tavares said in the beginning, the winter conditions for people parking at Jenny Pond and then coming up to Oak Street, not only is the hill a problem during the winter for icy and snow conditions, the width that would be plowed as well may make it impossible for people to get up there, but the intersection of Summer and Oak Street is a very heavily trafficked area that cars speed through there constantly, making it an unsafe area for people to walk up and down that street as it is right now, let alone having kids go to school within there, which was much different than when I was at Oak Street in the latter years before they shuttered it. Another condition as well that Ms. Farrar brought up is the handicapped issue. So if we do have modifications that are needed to that building, as was stated by the presenter, that nothing will be increased within the budget, how would we fund these mechanisms staying within the budget when we could already have existing handicap facilities, ramps, and parking that exist at the old Town Hall on Lincoln Street, which is all suited for that, cordoned off rooms so that there's dedicated classrooms for different academic activities and tons of space for storage? I, even though I am not from this precinct, I stick with the neighbors of this precinct as I know that neighborhood very well, and I hope that you veto this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, the lady in the back, please come down.
Hi. I am a longtime Plymouth resident, although I left for forty years. My parents were in, I grew up in the school system. My parents were both teachers here and very committed to public education. And so I honor you. I know a lot of the people on this board very well from the time I was about this high, and I really know what Oak Street School was used for, and it is very inappropriate to send high school people there. It's actually kind of humiliating on one level because it was a kindergarten and a first and second grade, but that's beside the point. We have lost Cornish Burton. We have lost Mount Pleasant School, which would be ideal for this project, in my opinion. That's my opinion, okay? Now we could go on to one of the beautiful buildings we have downtown on Lincoln Street. That, to me, is appropriate, using a piece of that. If you want to take the children away from these fancy, fancy high schools that have just been built at great expense, you could use some of this very old, traditional high school that my parents went, not my parents, just my mother, before she was a teacher. She went to that school. I graduated from the other Lincoln Street School, and where did those lions go? That's what I want to know. They were there when I graduated, but somehow the lions by the building have disappeared, okay? This is off the point. I'm all wet because I heard about this meeting in the early afternoon. I had to jump in my pond and cool off because I was kind of agitated about the whole meeting. I thought I should say something, but I didn't want to talk, and I want to be brief. I just think it's a very poor idea to use Oak Street School.
Okay, thank, thank you.
That's about it.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we didn't get your name.
My name, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Four on the borderline of Three, Jean Patnod Lane.
Thank you, Jean.
Or just simply Jean Wayne, but I come under the name of Patnod because those are the schoolteacher names.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee. I want to talk about some points that haven't been brought up yet this evening. The first of which being, you all know that if you were to consider the neighborhood's plight and switch your direction towards eleven Lincoln Street, you'd actually be returning to your roots, as that was a school before it was a town administration building. And it'd be good for you to consider that. I'm a somewhat of a history preservationist myself, much to my wife's dismay, as I have countless pieces of vintage iron scattered around my property. But the issue is, I like to see the Town Hall utilized as a continuing municipal facility and not turned into condominiums, which is the alternative. The other issue is, I know that the school committee at one point looked at that building, and you put out some budget numbers as to what it would cost to retrofit eleven Lincoln Street to your needs. The number was around a million dollars, or maybe a little north of a million dollars. It's come to my attention that the sale of Mount Pleasant Street has, in my estimation, netted the town six hundred thousand dollars, which in itself is criminal. It should be a lot more than that, but there's six hundred thousand dollars in the town's real estate fund that would be yours for the using to help retrofit eleven Lincoln Street to your needs. On top of that, if you did decide to administratively vote to change your direction and not look at Oak Street and instead look at Lincoln Street, you could talk about the possibility of the sale of Oak Street, and that would probably generate you getting close to the, the number that you need. You could probably get a three hundred thousand dollars at a minimum for that property, which would put you closer to the million-dollar number that you originally estimated for your needs at eleven Lincoln Street. But since the time that you telegraphed your original decision that you did not want to look at the eleven Lincoln Street, there have been many monetary improvements that would also help you. There's a brand-new roof on that facility. There's new chiller units and air conditioning updates, recent inspections to elevators. I'm saying it's, it's very close to move in, but however, even if it was not close to move-in readiness for you, there is a funding source of close to a million dollars, I believe, is available to you to, to meet those needs. So please consider the plight of the neighbors. This is a great program, as many have said before, I'm not going to repeat that. It's just a bad fit. But please consider that as you deliberate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We have time for a few more. This is the lady in the back here, please. Please identify yourself.
Hi, Diana Budge. I'm an Oak Street neighbor across the street from the school. I think my concern is, if you establish this program at Oak Street this year, and you have a complaint from someone who has a disability, you're going to run into the same thing you ran into when you had a full-time kindergarten and you had a student that was disabled and had health issues that required a nurse. It was reported to the state, and you had to close it. It would be, to me, very sad to start this program and have kids established in this building and then have to relocate them again. I think that would be disruptive to them and non-productive in terms of the program itself. So you really need to think of that as well. I think that's, it's a real concern, because any time during the school year, you could have any one of these students with a disability, that would make it impossible for them to use the facility. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir, please come down. Mr. Cahan, welcome.
Bill Cahan, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. A lot of nice points have been made today. I'm a lifelong resident of the neighborhood and live close to Lincoln Street. I'd like to add to what Precinct, Town Meeting Member Three, Dale Weber indicated. I think that also you have to look at Lincoln Street. It does have a generator, where if the power goes out, we hear that generator go on at night during a storm, so it, it does have unique capabilities to accommodate a program that may be growing or in some other capacity. There is a funding mechanism out there to address those issues. I think it's a great program. I think Kevin has demonstrated in his presentations a great deal of energy and foresight into the idea of getting these students back on track. I understand the dilemma we have with our two new high schools not being accommodating towards having someone go back into an environment that may be challenging in terms of where they were and how they found themselves in the condition they're in. But at the same time, I think the Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four, Jean Patnod, had indicated that it can be humiliating to be put into a situation to go back to a building that was designed specifically for first and second graders. These are high school kids. And I think that when we look at our public buildings and you look at the school committee and the work that you put into the designing of the North and the South, they're inspiring buildings. You go in those buildings, you're inspired by that architecture, you want to go in there and put your best foot forward, and I think that's what we did for these high school students in North and South. And when these kids are trying to get back on track and we're sending them to a school that was meant for first and second graders, I think psychologically that might not be the best place to put them in. There's a purpose for our public buildings and why they designed the way they were, and Lincoln Street has that quality that was established almost in eighteen ninety-eight. So it would be great to see it go back into some accommodation of providing students a place to go and, and learn. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sorensen and the rest of the school committee, and Gary and Dr. Campbell. I know this, didn't know how this was going to turn out. This is a debate about Oak Street, Lincoln Street, whatever, but I just wanted to share some information with the board, just in case they didn't know. And I'm not sitting here defending the decision by the Board of Selectmen to sell Mount Pleasant Street. But one of the factors of selling Mount Pleasant Street was financially. Originally, there was some interest by multiple people, not to say it wasn't a sincere and a good interest, of having senior citizen, low-income housing in Mount Pleasant Street. Financially, it didn't make sense. The estimates were that eight condos, over the course of ten years, we're talking half a million dollars' worth of tax revenue. That's nothing to sneeze about in terms of eleven Lincoln Street. I would not be in favor of that. It's certainly not my decision to make in a vacuum. It's a huge building. When Dennis Westgate put together an original estimate of construction, retrofit, improvements in eleven Lincoln Street, I think it was a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, and then there were additional reviews done of it, and it was well over a million, whether it was two or three, I honestly don't remember. I would just hope that wherever this program gets located, I think there's a lot of merit to it, but I would hope it's a collaborative effort by different constituencies, a communication, keep the communication open. I first heard about Oak Street when Nancy Doggy sent out an email in terms of meetings. The first meeting was on Tuesday night, which was a selectmen's meeting. I shared with Nancy that I was unable to attend. There were a couple of other meetings that were held during the day that I am not able to attend and many others cannot attend because of work, full-time work commitments. In the last meeting, I was out of town on vacation, out of state. So I would just hope that however this goes, it's a collaborative effort, not to cut the students short this year in terms of where we're going to put them. Again, logistically, you know, one of my thoughts was, what's wrong with Center Hill Preserve? I heard that there were concerns about transportation costs, our transportation alternatives, if it's eleven Lincoln Street, Oak Street, there were transportation costs that were going to be involved there. So I just hope that it's, again, not decision made at the ninth hour that people get boxed into a corner. We want these students to learn, we want them to graduate, but I think it's a conversation that has multiple constituencies to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave the table, let me make a comment and apologize to your board, because I had intended to have a presentation at the Board of Selectmen long before this evening on this particular topic. I'd asked Kevin if he would go, but it was summertime. We're on a brief, a brief schedule of meetings. People are on vacation, and so it fell on me, and it never happened. So we'll make sure that if we have an issue like this in the future, you folks will not be caught by surprise.
Okay, appreciate that, Jim. Okay, appreciate that, Jim.
Is there any other comments with new material to bring before the school committee? Mr. Joyce.
Kevin Joyce, Town Meeting Member and the Chairman of the Disabilities Commission. I've been on the Disabilities Commission for over 10 years, and this issue has not come in front of our commission yet. It will be addressed. It's just fell in between, as you've mentioned, vacation situations and so forth. But as the Chairman of the Disabilities Commission, I have reached out to the MOD and asked for their opinion of the situation, giving them the information that I knew, and it's pretty much what you conveyed this evening. And they said the liability of housing students at the Oak Street location for the town and for the school department is very high. It's significant. If someone was refused because they were disabled, or a teacher wanted the job and was disabled, or handicapped in one way or another, the liability of the town would be exposed. And it's something I haven't heard tonight and something I think you should know about. I'm greatly in favor of the Alternative Program. Kevin seems to have done a terrific job. I think he will find a place for this. I drove by the Oak Street location. I've been in the Oak Street building. I have actually communicated and dealt with the people at Oak Street several times in the last four or five years. The parking is very limited, as you know, and parking on the street is really not an alternative. That street is very congested. In fact, someone mentioned tonight speeding. I don't know if you know on Oak Street, they have a speeding flashing light to keep people to 20 miles an hour that is on that street. That indicates to me that speeding is an issue on that street. So speeding, handicap accessibility, transportation to and from wherever they can park, it just doesn't fit that location. I'd ask you to reconsider that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any final points before the school committee deliberates? Okay, seeing no hands at this point. Any final points from Dr. Maestis?
The only comment I have is, you know, I appreciate all the comments, and I think Mr. Abatabli has been, Kevin has been very receptive, and he's really taken good notes as to what your concerns are. You know, I think depending on what happens with the vote tonight, I think we're going to have to see what the future of that program holds, you know, if it goes one way or another. So.
Okay.
So I'll turn it back to you.
I just want, before I open it up to the school committee for your discussion and questions, I just want to express my appreciation to everybody who came here this evening and everybody who spoke this evening and those who didn't speak. One of the things that I really appreciated was the sort of sense of respect that we all felt from you to us, and I hope that we can deliver that back as well. A lot of good information came up. We've been debating this for a while, and as I told you at the public meetings, this is not, this decision has not been made until this school committee takes a vote, and that's what I hope should happen this evening. Committee members with questions, observations, conclusions? Mr. Selly.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, say thank you to the neighbors and the residents that came out. I've certainly driven down Oak Street, and I know, you know, sitting in that traffic, some of the concerns you would have, and I do appreciate the input and information for sure. I think the one thing that's really refreshing this evening is that we all agree that we need something for these kids. So, you know, with respect to the school committee and the board, we'll definitely take everything into consideration, and we hope we can find a solution. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Morgan.
What's housed in Oak Street now?
Right now, it's empty. The facilities office had moved in there a few years back. And they moved in there, they were housed at the wastewater treatment building behind Plymouth South High School, and we moved them into that building probably right after the kindergarten, full-time kindergarten program for Cold Spring or the north part of town was available. So right now, they are at Center Hill, and that's where they're operating this summer.
Okay. And how much, a couple of folks commented that it is not disabilities compliant in terms of, how much, do we have an estimate, how much would it cost to bring that building compliant?
No, we have not investigated that. The current population of student at the Alternative Program, it does not have students that have disabilities. I think the points that have been brought up have been valid points regarding the accessibility issues, and we have, as you all know, we have dealt with this before at that building. And that's something to take into consideration.
Thank you. Other committee members with questions or comments? I will say that I am not in favor of placing this program at Oak Street, and I should tell the committee that I had the opportunity last week to revisit Lincoln Street. And I also went through the engineering report today and the Gale report, and there are substantial items with dollars attached to it. And so my concern about that building still remains because of the dollars attached to it, but there's new information that we have this evening. One is, the roof was repaired, and that was a big dollar amount on that building. And the second one is, we have a program that really needs a home. And so I would be in favor of looking at Lincoln Street in place of, in place of the recommendation for Oak Street. But I'm only one member on this committee. Ms. Burgess.
I'll take a motion from you in a second.
And I agree with Dr. Sorensen. I'm not in favor of this, and I, as I expressed at the last meeting, I am also a neighbor, Precinct 3, very close, right next to the Gress Mill. And I do think, though, with every, with as many Town Meeting Members that are here today, just, we were told as well that any money from the sale of the building, in order for it to come to us, it has to be approved by Town Meeting, so please keep that in mind if it comes down to that, that that is what we were told by the financial director for the town, that only Town Meeting can approve to appropriate that money towards what we want it for. So I'm just putting that bug in everybody's ear as well, so, and I am, I'm not in favor of moving into Oak Street.
Ms. Burgess.
I'm also not in favor of moving the program. I'm sorry. I'm also not in favor of moving the program to the Oak Street allocation. I understand, I am in favor of the Alternative Program. I'm in favor of having an alternative space, given some, given the needs of the students, but with multiple concerns of the immediate community and actually the lack of handicap accessibility. And I say that because if there were a student whose health concerns changed within their time being there, how do we accommodate that student? So.
Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess.
I move that we do not go to the Oak Street school.
Mrs. Burgess, may I ask you to make the motion a positive motion? So I would, I would ask you to move the recommendation of administration.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to then move the recommendation of the administration not to move to Oak Street School and to look at.
The recommendation of administration is to move to Oak Street. We need to have it on the record that they made the most, the recommend, the administration recommended Oak Street, we'll vote on it. So you will move the recommendation of administration?
No.
Nope, nope.
This is too funny.
It's on here.
So we're going to.
We have to vote down.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to do.
If we decide to do that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, I see. I got to click this. Okay, got it. No, that's the program. Okay. It's not on here, is it? So, I want to move that the recommendation of the administration.
Then you can vote down your own motion. You can vote no on your own motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to move the recommendation of the administration.
Of the administration.
Is there a second to that?
All right, I have no second.
I'll second it, but I just want to make a point that we need to vote on Oak Street separate from any discussions about Lincoln Street.
That's correct.
Yeah, oh, no.
Right now, the motion is, the motion is to move, to accept the recommendation of administration to move the Alternative Program to Oak Street.
I will second that motion.
That has been made, Ms. Burgess, that's your second. Any question on the motion?
No.
Okay, so then we'll take the vote on that motion, and we can do that electronically. I assume everybody's on?
I'm not on.
You're not on?
No, she's not on.
Why don't you do it?
No.
Okay, we'll do an oral vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have no votes in favor of the motion. All those opposed? Committee has voted in opposition to that motion. It does not carry. Now, Mr. Morgan, did you want to address a second possibility to this discussion?
No, I was, I just wanted to point out that there is discussions about Lincoln Street, which we have previously voted down and is unrelated to Oak Street, so I just want to confuse the two.
Would the committee be willing to have a special meeting next Monday evening at Lincoln Street? So we can see the building, I saw it last week, that we could see the building and we could discuss the dollar needs as it relates to the building?
Yep. Can I ask? Yep. I also think that we might have two options to consider as well, the Alternative Program at Lincoln Street or the Alternative Program at South Meadow Road, if that's been considered and that the office is moving to Lincoln Street. That, I mean, I just would say we should think about both options when we're discussing this.
There's a lot to discuss.
Yes.
I need to get on the schedule. Is everybody available next Monday night?
Monday's fine.
Are you available?
I think so.
Yes, 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 all around? So we can have a special meeting next Monday night? Can we get that posted?
Can you arrange that?
Okay, and that will be at Lincoln Street?
I will talk to Melissa.
At seven o'clock?
To try to arrange that.
Okay.
Yeah, but public comments.
Is that a piece of information that we need to know?
I think so.
Now, please come forward.
Kevin Joyce, again, Town Meeting Member. I'm not sure if I'm understanding you correctly by visiting 11 Lincoln Street. 11 Lincoln Street is not a school building.
No.
It's a town-owned building.
Mm-hmm.
And before you can consider moving into that building, I would think the town would have something to say about that first. It has to go in front of the town, is what I'm saying. So think about that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a special meeting will be posted for next Monday night.
We can now move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is PYDC, is there a report?
No.
There is no report.
They have no meeting this month.
Is there a Building Committee report?
Yes, there is.
Ms. Burgess.
Whip through it. The, it began with the Newtown Hall. It said that the cooling system was not working well, and they were trying to balance it and that, but they found out that two wheels were wired backwards, so, and they praised Athmontron for helping the towns with it. So, okay. The council on aging was having some air quality system, and contractors were coming in to find solutions. The library roof, they're replacing 12 skylights. Some, they're going to put some supplemental lighting with internally rather than having as many skylights as they have. The fire station, it's about, it's estimated to be about 7.5 million. Equipment and electrical is needed for the equipment. The construction is to start in March. South Street parking deck, it says that they're removing the dirt pile. They're one month behind, and because sheeting needs to be done before the cold weather. Plymouth South High School, Gary's already given the report. It's the same report. The Maritime Facility, they're awaiting funding, and they're coming to the Building Committee this month to do a presentation. This is Thursday night, actually. And, let's see, Main Street Extension Parking Garage, they're going to do a presentation to us again. The Airport Administration Building is moving forward. It'll be done, it'll be going very quickly. Lincoln Street, they're taking things out, and then they're going to have an auction and put it on the market. The salt shed, they said that they're rebooting, and the White House Beach Project is dead for now. It was a long, long meeting, though. Okay.
Mr. Morgan, do you have anything to add to that report?
No, Ms. Burgess covered it pretty well. It's just the concerns with the Newtown Hall with some rooms being 80 degrees, other rooms being 60 degrees. Hopefully, that can get resolved. I know they were going to look into putting the builders on notice because the warranty's about to expire on the building, and they didn't need to use the air conditioning when it went live last year, so now all these issues have come to light in the 11th hour, so we want to make sure we're protected.
Okay, thank you. Personnel?
We have three short-term attorney leaves, 16 resignations, seven certificated appointments, seven classified appointments, and three leave of absences.
Thank you for that report. Any questions on the personnel report? Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt?
Where has the school? I'm still on solar project. I'm on solar project.
If you could just go to the homeschooling, that would be great.
Yeah, there's nothing else next, right?
It's not coming up.
Homeschooling's next. Do you want to just look online?
Homeschooling would be the best.
Okay. Homeschooling report?
Yes, tonight, we have a number of homeschool plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office. We have 55. Those homeschool plans have been reviewed by the district and meet all the requirements sent forth by the school committee, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a recommendation to approve the homeschool plans. Is there a motion? Mrs. Hunt is the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. Are there any questions on that? Okay, again, we're having technology problems, so we'll vote with a show of hands. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. And now the warrants.
Bear with me, I'm not catching up. Okay, here we go. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report for warrants, I move that the school committee, Plymouth School Committee, accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S18JUL2 dated June 30, 2018, in the amount of $884,830.44, as presented.
Is there a second to that? Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any questions on that warrant? We have three of them this evening. Okay, we'll take the vote on that one. All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the trans, excuse me, transaction summary report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the FY19 accounts payable warrant number S072618 dated July 26, 2018, in the amount of $219,464.52, as presented.
You've heard the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Burgess is the second. Is there a question on that motion? Okay, all those in favor? And now the final warrant, please.
Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S080918 dated August 9, 2018, in the amount of $307,682.48, as presented.
Is there a second? Burgess is the second. Is there a question? Okay, please vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, I want to go through a series of minutes for approval. We'll start with May 7. Do I have a motion? Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 7.
Is there a second? May 2. Oh, 7, rather. Ms. Burgess is, Mrs. Burgess is the, is the second on the 7. Any questions on the 7? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? We have one abstention. Ms. Haywood, you have the abstention?
Yes.
Okay. May 21. Is there a motion? Mr. Morgan?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 21.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second on May 21. Is there a question? All those in favor?
Abstained.
We have one abstention? Do we have two abstentions? Ms. Hunt and Ms. Burgess? We didn't get the minutes on the executive session of the 21st. They weren't, they didn't come up earlier today when I did it. But I see them here now, so maybe it was me.
I saw them earlier today.
Okay, so we'll take the motion.
Did everybody else?
Yeah.
Did everybody get them?
I did see them.
Okay. Is there a motion for the second, for the executive session? Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve the minutes from the executive.
Mr. Selly is moving. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Abstained.
Okay, we have, a pair of hands up in favor, please. We have, Ms. Haywood, Mr. Morgan, and Mr. Selly is in favor. Who's abstaining? I'm abstaining because I haven't read them. We have three abstentions, so that's gonna have to come back to the committee. Thank you. June 4.
Well, I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it, seconded by Mr. Morgan. Is there a question on June 4? Okay, all those in favor? Ms. Haywood?
I'm sorry.
Everybody's voting in favor on June 4? Thank you. June 18, we got two to go. There's a lot of reading between the meetings here. Is there a motion on June 18? Mr. Morgan?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 18.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Hunt on a question. All those in favor? Unanimous. And finally, July 9.
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Mr. Selly, thank you very much. Questions? Any questions on, on July 9? Okay, all those in favor? And we have one abstention. It's Ms. Hunt. I never thought we'd get through that. Obsolete books. Ms. Dr. Maestis?
Yes. Tonight, we have mathematics books from the, this is Practical Statistics, second edition, from Plymouth North High School, 20 books. They are, they were published in 1993, and we've moved away from that edition. We've got an update. These will be donated to Lowell High School.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the recommendation regarding the obsolete books? Ms. Hunt?
I'll move, I'll move that we, that the request to dispose of obsolete books be accepted and approved.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any questions on that one? Okay, all those in favor, please? That's unanimous. Before I adjourn the meeting, just let me remind the committee, we're meeting next Monday night. And I also want to tell the committee that our Saturday morning meeting is going to be on September 8. And that's at the...
We will have a date. It might be at one of the high schools, but we'll, we'll see.
But please put it in your, in your schedule for the Saturday morning meeting is going to be on September 8.
Take these home.
Everybody told me they were available that morning. Is there any other business that come before the school committee? Seeing no hands, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.